Good morning, please join me in our place. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Andy.
Good morning, I'd like to welcome everyone. It's June 19th at 9:02 AM for our weekly business meeting. Commissioner Boyce, do you have an update?
Quickly, thank you, Chair Pash. Law enforcement deaths, officer down memorials up to 55 from 49. Firefighter fatalities from 19 to 22, military deaths remain at 13 nationwide.
Lost 6 this week?
That is the count now, yeah, 55. And I haven't seen any news on that, but moment of silence, and if we can, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so do we have any amendments to the agenda?
None here, Mr. Chair.
None here. I move we approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, we have two public comments this morning. First public comment is Ms. Cesna. Morning and welcome. If you wouldn't mind when you talk, just pull one of those microphones that's most comfortable for you to you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here today to ask this committee to consider implementing an ordinance regarding acreage and properties that aren't kept up. We have two and a half acres on Ocean View between Pedrolly Drive and Lilly Field that continues to be a problem over the years. This year, the weeds got up to over eight feet tall. And trying to navigate onto Ocean View, you take your life in your hands. So, we have, I sent a letter to the owner. I took pictures, I had other people that live in the neighborhood sign the letter. And the fire chief came down and he saw that it was such a problem that he called immediately and talked to the owners and said that he wanted it to get done. So because of that phone call, it did get done. But I feel that once a year is not enough, that we need to do this possibly May and then again September or October to avoid those problems. So that's my statement today, and I hope you'll take that under consideration.
I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Could we have the address, please? Could you provide us that or email it where you're convenient?
I don't know the plot number.
Okay.
What's the intersection?
Pedrolly and...
Intersection, Pedrolly and what?
It's right on Ocean View between Pedrolly and Lilly Field.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Mr. Barnes. There it is.
He's gone high-tech on us.
He's got it.
There it is.
Oh, wow.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm David Barnes. This is the view of the Port of Gold Beach on June 4th. As you see, there's kind of a large shoal that's developed over the mouth of the inlet there. I spoke to the people over in the port about this yesterday. They've told me that already in this spring, they've had at least a dozen boats have run up the shoal out there. The Army Corps of Engineers, they've contacted the Army Corps of Engineers. They're coming in end of this month, beginning of next month, and they're going to start doing a dredging project. But the thing is that the only part that they're going to dredge is what you can see that would come down the edge of that Long Island and hopefully this year, because the federal line comes in through here. They're not going to do anything about the rest of that bar that stretches all the way underneath the bridge and all the way out. When I spoke to the people down there yesterday, they let me know that the Army Corps of Engineers has told them that if there is a local quarry that was so inclined, they could come out there and they would be able to dig that and take the aggregate that's there for their own use. I was kind of wondering, you know, since they're coming out as an emergency to take care of this, but the emergency only ends at the federal right-of-way, I guess. If I could, I don't know how to go up to another picture, but...
Look at the bottom going.
Right on the bottom, right?
Arrow, yeah.
That little arrow down there.
Easy, that mouse is sensitive.
Okay.
Right, there, you got it.
Is an understatement.
This is another view of the same thing. Here's another one with the tide a little bit higher. And then this picture here, the docks that you see on the left there are outside the Landing Restaurant, Landing on the Rogue. As you can see, there's a shoal that's developed all the way around there. If you follow the side up along the docks, you can't go anywhere because there's a large gravel bar there. And the same on the other side, so the only safe passage is really through the slot in the middle. You know, we've done a lot on addressing our fire issues in the last few months, the last year or so. The Rogue is very lifeblood of Curry County, you know. We have 40,000 people go up Jerry's jet boats every year. I don't know how many thousands more come in and use it in their own personal boats and guides that use the river. And, you know, I was just hoping that, you know, maybe this body could put together a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers, copy Congressman DeFazio on it, since he is the chair of the House Transportation Committee. And, you know, maybe we could, you know, maybe we can get something done on this to... This is unsafe as it stands right now, you know, coming out of the mouth of the harbor. And this year, there's going to be some serious, a lot of like negative low tides coming up in both July and August. They're really compromising the safety of people who don't know the river trying to get up there. Like I said, they're supposed to be starting this beginning of July, maybe the first week in July. And, you know, I don't know what I'm hoping for, maybe that they can expand their project. I was told that they're doing what they're doing, and that's when they run out of money, they stop. You know, maybe some more funding could be put towards it to address some of the other issues there. But, you know, I just wanted to bring it to your attention this morning and see if something, maybe, you know, you guys can get started, maybe doing something about the port. Commission has a meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, and if anybody was available to go over there and ask them, you know, if there's anything you guys could do to help.
Well, there's actually a lot being looked at in this right now. That property almost across the street there is my property, and because of the ponds that were cut into the side of the Rogue a few years ago, we believe that, and there's been a study done, that those ponds actually helped to change the flow of the Rogue. The Corps, I was at the board meeting last night in Harbor, and the Corps is coming there first to do an emergency dredging at the mouth of their port, and then they're coming directly here. The problem with the Corps is, right now, they're limited as to the scope of what they can do. They've got a contract to go to the mouth of and not past each port of entry. I've spoken to the Rogue Jets, and they have actually lost trips this year because of that bar. They couldn't get out, and they finally learned, you know, where they need to be to negotiate it. But I understand that there was a time here in Curry, a decade ago, I don't know, but there was a company that came in here and offered to dredge the mouth of the Rogue all the way up to the first turn in the river, and we're offering, and I don't remember the exact number, it was like a dollar a ton.
Okay.
Which didn't seem like a lot of money, but it was, they figured it would have been over a million dollars.
Wow.
And they were going to come in and dredge it, and they couldn't get the permits for some reason. I would be, I'd love to work on this and, if you want to help with it, I'd love to be side by side. And I'd love to see this whole thing cleaned out all the way up. They used to clean it too, Elfin Rock, was it, years ago?
Somewhat, yes.
Yeah, that's about the first...
They'd clean it all the way up to there. We all know the Rogue, the way that the gravels come down this river, we've got three or four shoals, I was told this year, that have developed that weren't there before, so we've got to do something.
Yeah, actually, when I was coming by the other day, I happened to notice there was a boat. Farthest away with the props stuck right out there, out there. And I saw the guy on the dock, I guess, trying to throw a rope to him, but he was out there with a boat hook, trying to push himself off the gravel out there, so, you know, it's going to keep being a problem for people all summer long.
Don't leave.
Commissioner Boyce set his hand up first.
Either way is fine.
Okay, go ahead.
I do know that all the ports, I was on the port commission, the state put in for, I think it was a clamshell dredger, and that's housed up in Coos Bay, and in order to use that, each individual port would have to pay for the transportation down here, but that is available.
Okay. You know, maybe that's something that this body could get with our port commission on and see if we can help them out with that.
I would love to work on that, because this river needs, you're right, it is the lifeblood of this community. And this river needs to be, it's time that the gravel in this river is addressed.
Okay.
It's been too many years that it hasn't been addressed, and I would love to work on that.
If you're available tomorrow night at 6, I'll see you at the port commission meeting.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, I just appreciate having this conversation and this awareness to the public. I've seen these pictures, and Mr. Barnes, if you look at those two spots right in the middle of the screens, that's gonna, that's gonna get a lot of unaware fishermen, I mean. Estimate the number, the times that you've fished out there in the bay, I mean, sometimes 300 or 400 boats.
Yeah.
And it is such a critical part of our economy, as we all know. And this is, this is not normal. This has to do with the fires, forgive me for bringing that up, but...
No, that's all right.
Especially when you look at the amount of sediment that has come down from the Cheko Bar into the port, Brookings Harbor, and then it, I'm afraid we're just getting started here. And we had a bill, Representative Brock Smith had a bill, that just unfortunately and surprisingly did not get very far at the legislature, just to have the money for a study to, so we could understand this better. I honestly don't know where that bill is right now. I think it's, I think it's dropped, maybe not, I haven't pursued that. But we need those funds to figure, to figure this out. It's gonna, it's gonna really affect Lexus Landing John's Resort. You mentioned Jerry's, I mean, I've run out of that port thousands of times, and you go, "Where do you go here so you can, don't embarrass yourself and hit bottom?", you know, so...
For me, it's easy, I'm not, I'm not a riverman yet, you know, so...
Could you go back, yeah, thank you.
It's no big deal.
I think that's the best photo, right there. Yeah, no, go back, two more. Anyway, Mr. Chair, I'll wind down here, but yes. And so the only way to escape now is to take a sharp left at full plane, hit tight around the corner there on the, on the east, excuse me, west jetty, and then head towards China, and then make a turn hopefully and head back east.
You mentioned that this is the bar that's coming down from Lexus now.
Oh, it's just...
That's grown so big, you could build a housing development out there, but you have to go almost all the way to the bridge to get around that bar now, so...
And as you know, when the, when the fishermen are idling in their boats, trolling for Sam, and the tour boats try so hard to idle by, when you're idling down, you're drawing almost two feet in the bigger boats, and so it, it's not fun, so, yeah, thanks for helping us pursue this, and I would, if you are available and interested in working on that, I think that is, but yeah, let's get started. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just one last comment, you mentioned having a gravel company come and get rid of some of the gravel. I know there would be environmental issues and so forth, they'd have to get permits and all of that, so...
I don't know, I'm just, I'm relating to you what I was told, so...
You're just doing common sense.
I'm kind of second-hand, second-handing this, but I was told that Andy, the port manager over here, was told by the Army Corps of Engineers that if they wanted to, if somebody wanted to do it, that they could build a road down onto here, this is all compacted gravel there, so they could drive trucks out and load their trucks and drive them back again. And if the Army Corps of Engineers is backing it, I would think that that would kind of ease the permitting process a bit.
Let me try and get ahold of Congressman DeFazio's office this afternoon.
Okay.
I think that's the first place to start, but I know what you were just speaking about with Lexus, where Greg's old place is there, the other mail boats?
Yes, you can't even get in there.
That's completely rocked over, I mean, it's completely rocked over, where you can't even get a boat up in there.
That's what I was told, yeah.
And my wife and I estimate we've lost eight or 10 acres of land where our property is because the river has chewed into that now. By the gravel farther up the river, it's actually moving the river farther in. And we're estimating another eight or 10 years, it might be North Rogue River, or North Bank might be waterfront property in another eight or 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
And a lot of discussion on to what degree are the two dam removals, Savage Rapids and Gold Gray, responsible, because it changed things, and, I mean, we need to know what's going on and to get help, sure.
Anyway, I'll try and contact his office this afternoon, and then I'll give you a heads up tomorrow evening at the port meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnes, will you be able to bring that to the port meeting, or do you want us to run copies of that?
These pictures? I got them.
Okay. Yes, I was with him last night.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Just give me one second here. Okay, next, that's the public comments we have, so we're going to move to the consent agenda. Looking for approval to the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners minutes from June 5th, business meeting minutes, an order authorizing collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters 233 for the Sheriff's Office-covered employees, an order authorizing collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters 206 for Road Department-covered employees, a modification of the grant documents for Cooperative Law Enforcement Agreement Number 17-L-E-1106-1000-012, and culvert on Ranch Creek under North Bank Rogue River Road.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
For the public, I appreciate that you took the time to read those five. Whoops, my mic on?
Yours is on, yeah, that JJ, I believe, is the amended agenda, that's the agenda they approved.
This is the amended, yes.
206 is on there, did you read the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
He read everything right?
I read everything.
According to mine.
The subscription agreement is in the package, so there were two items with 206, is, there was, and it's in, the subscription agreement's in your package, it might not have made it onto the amended agenda, but essentially, there's the collective bargaining agreement, which I think you just presented, and then there's also a insurance subscription agreement, which is in the package. It's, and it's essentially where signature authority to the chair to sign up for the Teamsters OTET Trust Insurance for the 206 Union.
Okay.
So we just move to add that in there.
So we are doing that.
It'll be, will it be six items on the consent agenda, instead of five?
Yes, there will be six.
Again, I started to say that I appreciate you reading those for the public that doesn't have an agenda in front of them, and so, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the consent agenda as written here.
As amended?
As amended, thank you, yes.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Consent agenda carried unanimously.
All right, number five, discussion action items. A, central paving bid, Mr. Christensen. Morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you.
Good morning. Richard Christensen, Curry County Roadmaster. Yes, we have received a bid from Tidewater for $815,000 to pave central Curry County roads, Naseka Beach Road, Hillside Acres Road, Raccoon Lane, Waterburn Loop, Brooks Road, Water Tank Road, and Thimbleberry, and it's in our budget, and we'd like to get signature authority to move forward with this project.
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Good job.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, next discussion item is B, Willow Creek Bridge, Mr. Christensen.
Last summer, the city of Oregon derated this bridge where a fully loaded cranberry truck would not be able to haul their cranberries across this bridge, and so we're gonna complete a temporary repair for about $21,000. We're gonna do this as a temporary repair as to not complicate or not allow us to apply for a bridge replacement in the future. If we do it temporary, it keeps us in line for our future bridge replacement projects, so this will allow the cranberry farmers to haul their product to market. We'd like to get approval to move forward with this $21,000 expenditure.
Commissioner Gold?
How much would it cost to do the total repair? I can kind of understand where you're coming from as far as grant funds, but...
The last two bridge projects about that size were about $2 million.
Okay, good enough.
And this is some of the money that we spoke of, that we need to use up some of this money anyway, right?
No, this, this money would be directly out of this year's road budget, $21,000, in the future, it would be, on a bigger project.
So I so move?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
You're the man of the hour, Mr. Christensen, with C, proposals for Curry County Engineering Services.
The Road Department would like to get approval to negotiate with Dyer Partnership a price for contract services to the Road Department for engineering. We had two proposals given, one was from Ausland, and one was from Dyer Partnership. And I had past Roadmaster Dan Crumley, past City of Brookings Public Works Director Laura Lee, and myself review the applications, and due to Dyer's extensive experience as a city engineer for 18 Southwest Region agencies and their projects, we would like to get the board's approval to move forward with price negotiations with Dyer Partnership.
And this is negotiations only?
Negotiations only.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just where is Dyer located?
Dyer, Dyer Partnership is located in Coos Bay, and they serve as a city engineer for Port Orford, Gold Beach, and City of Brookings.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just want to add, if I can, Rich and I had had a discussion about if we had a county engineer, if they could also serve as the county surveyor, and at the current time, they're willing to consider that. So if we move forward, we can have further dialogues on that.
Great idea.
That's great.
Wow.
All right, roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Before you step away, I'd like to ask you if we could pick your brain a little bit on this issue that Mr. Barnes has brought forward. Any information that you have from your work in Brookings and/or with the county? Any contacts that you may have that we could maybe look at? Or any information that you could gather on this would be very, very helpful to this board to look to.
Yes, I can do that, I could contact Department of State Lands, US Army Corps of Engineers, and also ODFW to see if there could be some ease on the permitting. I know from past, on the Cheko River, it's been difficult for permitting for the local rock purveyors.
Right.
So if US, as Mr. Barnes said, if US Army Corps of Engineers is like giving a green light, maybe that would help.
Well, we're, I'm also thinking right now, while I'm just sitting here chewing on this, if there's a possibility that the county or the state could classify this as an emergency, because it is going to affect the livelihood of the river, not only the citizens that live here, but the livelihood of the river. So, you know, these are conversations that we can have with Congressman DeFazio and the Corps.
Let's put that together next meeting, I think that's...
Well, I'm gonna move, I'll get rolling.
As far as declaring an emergency?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yes, we're gonna be knocking on your door.
Sounds good.
Anything you can learn, please, we would greatly appreciate it.
I'll look into it, thank you very much.
All right, so that looks like our agenda for the moment. Our next thing will be our public hearings that start at 10:00 AM, at 10:10 AM, and at 10:20 AM. So I guess we are going to be adjourned until 10 o'clock.
How about we go through the rest of the...
Okay, you know what, we can do that, that's a good idea. Sure.
That we won't waste time.
There, we don't waste time, I like that. So let's do the director's report, Ms. Schmelzer.
Just to let you know, yes, or, yeah, it was actually yesterday I met with all of the people in community development. They were all able to be there except for one, and we discussed how the admin services can be shared and how that would work moving forward. So I think we've come to some good ways that we can increase some of the efficiencies down there and share the staff that we have. Also discussed the fact that we want to make sure the office is open five days a week, so we do have one employee who had volunteered to be there on Fridays to make sure the office would be open on Fridays, so we're working on that. The other big thing working on is still looking at that business license, as you know, and then working on the county properties. We've had a lot of interest in those county properties. So much interest that I'm not able to keep up with them right now, but it's just one of those things we just have to go slow and address. The next, at the next meeting, we are going to be bringing forward one of the requests that we had heard before, and that was the Elmers, if you remember, they had written a letter.
Right.
But aside from that, those are the big things we're working on right now.
At the next meeting, will we also be able to address staffing for the TLT and business license at that time?
I hope so, so I will talk about that a little bit, too. So I did pull together some job descriptions that we've had in the past and trying to blend them together. We can't advertise for that position until we know that the business license has been adopted, but I do have some descriptions that I've started blending together to come up with that actual job description.
Okay.
While we're on that subject, and I'm glad you reminded me, too, we did advertise for County Finance Director.
That was my next question.
Yeah, so that did go out in the paper. We did a modified job announcement and ran that, that ran last Thursday.
And did you happen to get ahold of Curry Health's accountant? She had possibly some apps from their headhunting that they might share with us.
Well, Commissioner Boyce was gonna reach out to CCH and talk to them about the possibility of sharing a person.
Okay.
In the meantime, what I have done is I've spoke with Louise about the job description and why she thinks we're having difficulty attracting people for the position. There's some obvious things like salary, but also the way it was written, so I did tweak it a little bit and gave it to Julie to send into LGPI to see if it, with the changes, would mean a change in salary or not. And I will be bringing that job description back to the board as soon as I hear back from LGPI.
Okay, and we might want to also do that, I know Mr. Boyce has a better relationship through AOC than the two of us on this side, so we may want to ask AOC if they would like to post that on their website as well. It would be a like-county job somewhere in the same state.
Or if do is ask, yeah.
Where they get to live.
And actually, Julie does, Julie Swift does, she puts it on AOC, she puts it on LOC, she puts it on the government sites that she can, and then the ones that are affiliated with, you know, you have your list served for finance people, so...
Perfect.
She also puts it on there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, yes, I contacted CCH, CEO, Mr. Duquet, and he's gonna get back to me with the accountant.
Good.
Yes, so I'll have a report for you at some point there.
All right, Commissioner updates. Seeing you were already speaking, you're up.
Thank you. This is what I sent out on my mail list. I'm spending almost half my time as Commissioner on natural resources issues, wildland fighting, rivers, public lands, all the above. And so I did mention last week that, or last meeting, that we have the responsibility to get a report to the Governor's Office. the responsibility to get a report to the governor's office, the governor's been very attentive, um... We, uh, one paragraph that I sent out, most Southern Oregonians are aware that we have the fastest-growing, highest-quality trees on earth. Our backcountry wilderness and national forests is the most rugged, most beautiful, most unique, and should be the most productive. And so, because we have the greatest forests, we have the best watersheds, and the most pristine rivers, and that brings us the best salmon run, so here we are trying to figure out ways to fiercely protect that and, and enhance that, so I see some very good things happening. Lumgri Fire, uh, is up to two-hundred-and-eighty acres. They originally were gonna have evacuations, they withdrawn that. Uh, that's just southeast of Wairika, excuse, yes, southeast. So, I'll submit this to the board, and, uh, part of this, uh, that I've been working on is for our six-month update on what we've got done um, under, uh, Mr. Chair and your leadership and the, the people that we've hired, especially with the efforts and expertise that a director of, I always say Director of Curry Operations, Schmelzer, has put together, and so um, the only other thing I wanna add, sometimes I get uh, challenged a little bit that, uh, my reports are too long, but I'm talking to the public and I'm also responsible to report to the board. Southern Oregon Workforce Investment Board, that's something that I have spent a lot of time on and failed to report to the board, so there was a little bit of uh, confusion there on exactly what that was, uh, and what it entails, what's involved. So, I did, we've got a letter from Gordon Clay, I'm sure you received, and Commissioner Gold received. Quick read here, June twenty-eighth is the deadline to get your name on the name of your organization on twenty-two thousand copies of the Suicide Awareness and Prevention Finding Hope, and so if the, this'll also be, I'll give it to Staff Jesuit, uh, just a general awareness and, uh, what it means to Curry County and how we can be a little bit prepared to help people and prevent as much as we can, so thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have for today.
Mr. Gold.
Well, I went to a ribbon-cutting ceremony of the Talawa Low Cost Housing last week. I was totally blown away. They are going to be having twenty-one homes. Usually when I think low-cost housing, I think of closed-in, tight homes, and everybody's on top of each other. This was not the case at all. These were ocean-view homes, solar, um, well-built, big, tall ceilings and so forth, so they had a, a feeling of airiness. In fact, I found out that there were several of the, the council members that I knew, so I said Talawa are gonna be the first to be able to, um, access tho, those homes. They're gonna be rentals. And another thing that I was impressed with, there's going to be a manager's place on-site so that they can make sure that they're well taken care of. There's going to be, um, center there for, um, for, uh, people to, to meet and, and so forth. There's also gonna be a playground, um, and they did this in a unique way. Talawa put in four million, and then they had a developer come in that with tax credits of nine million dollars, they were able to put this together. Now, it didn't come easily, but they were able to put this together, so I am going to be having the person that, uh, put this whole thing together, come and talk to us at our housing workshop. Also, I went to a vet stand-down last week. Uh, that was interesting, and I talked to the person from Amqua... What is it, Summer? What? Neighbor Works Amqua, about their housing, and I asked them specifically about are they using tax credits to put these things together, and so far not. I've been to some of their meetings and what I've seen from their meetings, they're taking old buildings and refurbishing them and putting individuals in those buildings. Total different scene there in, uh, Smith River with these homes, where they're individual homes. There'll be twenty-one of them by the time they're finished, so I did ask them the question down in Smith River if they might be interested in doing a project up here in Curry, and they were open to that, so anyway, that's my report.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing, I asked them if they would adopt me so that I could able to get in one of those homes. We just kinda laughed, so...
Well, I would kinda, uh, some of my comments are about that as well, the VA housing, uh, thing that we've been working on, to try and get developed in this county, is something that I wanna try and move forward with, and perhaps this board down the road can look to, uh, to donate a piece of county land if we can't find one that someone's willing to donate, um, to do some low-income veterans' housing. And very similar to what Commissioner Gold just said, we, uh, Commissioner Boyce and I had developed a relationship with someone down in South County to look at, uh, donating a property, and that person had similar thoughts to have a manager on the property as well to make sure the property was cared for, and he has since, um, I don't wanna say that he's not going to, but he has taken a step back on the project. But I would like this county to move forward to find some low-income housing for our veterans at, as the, uh, as the precedent, and then some, some also low-income housing for families um, that are just in a tough situation. So, on the VA stand-down, Tony Vaudy, I'd like to just give him props, he did a great job down there, uh, putting that all together. Uh, pretty much his office did all the legwork on that. Very nicely done. Uh, I think our, our vets are, are well represented by Mr. Vaudy and his office. And, um, I'm glad, I'm glad he's here. I do wanna let everyone know, including this board, that, um, I've received a letter, uh, from the, uh, commission, the Oregon Transportation Commission, addressed to myself, but as, you know, to address the entire board of the letter that we sent to them about the, um, the slide, the Huskanagin Slide, if I can ever pronounce that right.
Huskanaden.
Huskanagan.
It's whatever you wanna say.
You say tomato, I say tomato. But anyway, uh, they go into, uh, they, they thank us for sharing our concerns, and the adverse, they, they realize the adverse impacts, uh, to our county, of course. I, uh, I may disagree with some of their numbers, stabilizing the slide area is three-hundred-and-two million. Building a bridge is three-fifty, and that might be close. Uh, making substantial improvements to Carpenterville Highway to enable it to function as a detour is four-hundred-and-thirty-nine million. Um, I don't know about those numbers, but, um, or where they got them. But the, I'm just reading what they put in the letter. Um, they also tell us that they are committed to keeping our transportation lifeline open uh, for Brookings and Gold Beach during emergencies, and, um, they understand how difficult it's been for our citizens. Another thing I would like to comment on is the Curry Voices, um, action that was taken last week. Um, there's been a lot written about it, and I, um, I just wanna make it clear that, um, Curry County Voices is not, or the Curry Voices is not being silenced. The county is resuming its responsibility to deliver peg content, and we are eliminating the middleman. We have people and resources in place that can deliver the same, if not better, services for little or no additional cost to the taxpayer. And I wanna say people, including Mr. King and any, anyone in their group, will still be able to produce content and submit it to the county for broadcast. We are working out the fine details on this, and, uh, we will be forthcoming within the next sixty days, uh, as was, um, decided last week in our meeting. Again, I wanna reiterate this, uh, thing in the Rogue River. It's funny that Mr. Barnes brought it forward this morning because I was going to bring it forward in my comments. I have sat on my property across, uh, from my house and watched two boats get stuck in the last few evenings. Um, one guy could not get off the bar across from the restaurant that you pointed out. He was there for quite a time, and they, it took two boats to pull him off of that. Um, this is going to be, when this river drops, I mean, you can even see in this picture here that's still on the board, there's a gray area right across the, the inlet to the port, which I imagine is rock underneath that. This is going to be a huge, huge problem for our fishing and tourism, and, uh, I, I would hope, Mr. Barnes, that you would let us use these pictures. I would like to PDF these up to Senator, or Congressman DeFazio's office, Senator Merkley, uh, all of our, all of our, uh, Oregonian, uh, politicians that we can, including, um, some of our state, uh, district, you know, people, every, everyone we can send this to, that they are fully aware of the mouth of the Rogue River and what's happening here. And again, if we can look to declare an emergency on this through the state or through this county, this is something that needs to be addressed immediately because, as we know, summer's here, and this river's gonna fall fast. So, those are my comments.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Gold Beach Lumber and Ace Hardware better stock up on shovels, you suppose? So we actually could consider getting a community group of people with shovels and just go out there and have a little photo op. And, uh, I mean, we need national attention on this. We really do. It is, I mean, I don't, it gets back to sod and the highway, and by, if, if we could on the ODOT thing just for a moment here, um, but this is, this is bigger than the fires, I think. This is bigger than, I don't know how to, how to prioritize things, but I'm very happy that you're involved, very happy that, uh, Mr. Barnes is up on this, and yeah. Do we have a public comment from Andy?
He's taking a smile.
So back to ODOT real quick, uh, they spent thirty million. That was, that was kinda the report that Darren Avall gave a month ago or whatever, and so the thirty million that they've spent essentially in the last thirty years, that's about ten percent of completely redoing Carpenterville, ten percent of the bridge. Uh, so, I'm surprised that they highlighted this in a letter again because I know that's not really realistic, but they did respond, which I'm grateful for. Um, I thought our letter, uh, joint letter was very good, and I think on ODOT and, uh, the National Transportation Highway Fund, we just need to keep applying the pressure and not drop the ball there, that's all. Thank you.
Alright, so we are going to be in, uh, in recess, uh, until ten o'clock.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my god, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Banden to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langways is less than five hundred people. It's very small. So, we have to bring in tourists, and being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really wanna make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I wanna do for the rest of my life, and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're gonna send people now, and, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patent ourselves on that. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area, so we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station, so now people that wanna come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang out last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're gonna promote tourism, but we wanna do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way, and it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Banden down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing, and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have, and don't try to be something that you're not. It's gonna be hard, it's gonna take a long... hard. It's gonna take a long time. So, roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered, but walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kiwanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water.
Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So, we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled. And we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm gonna be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's gonna benefit the whole community.
For normal Board of Commissioner meetings, it is June 19th, and we are now at number six. This is the public hearing for the resolution to adopt the county budget. Ms. Melzer?
Yes, I will start with the resolution to adopt the county budget. Whereas Curry County needs to adopt a budget by July 1st, 2019 to have legal spending authority, therefore be it resolved that the Curry County Board of Commissioners hereby adopts the budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year in the amount of $105,360,580 available in the county clerk's office and dated this 19th day of June 2019. And then, we would look for the commissioners to approve and sign that.
Let me have a public hearing on this. So, it is 10:21. I will open a public hearing on this resolution to adopt Curry County budget. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? With none noticed, I will now close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move that we approve the resolution as written.
Have a second.
Second chair, Bash.
Any further comments? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, 6B, resolution to set the appropriations. Ms. Melzer.
Okay, and these are very broad.
I'd like to make comments.
Yes.
In the past, the resolutions for appropriations were very, very, very strict. Every single department had an appropriation level. We have discussed this several times, and I talked to, I believe, both the chair and the director of operations about, I mean, auditors have discussed it with me. There's been several discussions about how restricted these resolutions are and make the county have numerous supplemental budgets that have to be published in the paper because of their narrow appropriation levels. So, this appropriation level is one appropriation level for the general fund and one appropriation level for all other funds. I discussed it with Roy Rogers, who's the director of Polly Rogers, our audit firm. And he said that this was totally appropriate as long as I did not include any debt service funds in the other funds, which we don't have any debt service funds, that this is appropriate to do.
Council Huddle.
Thank you. I'm looking at the resolution and I'm looking at, you mentioned we're basically doing two funds, general fund and all other fund for our appropriations. I'm looking at the bottom of the all other fund category, and it uses a phrase, total general fund. Should that say total all other funds?
Probably. Sorry.
It's all right. I just want to...
I don't have it. I gave mine a copy of Julie.
Okay. But, okay, well, I think it should.
Just go ahead and correct that.
All right.
So, could you correct that on there, Ms. Melzer?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. So, if you would, please read that.
Okay. In the matter of appropriating the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget, whereas Curry County needs to appropriate budget expenditures by July 1st, 2019 to have legal spending authority, therefore be it resolved that $18,232,942 is unappropriated and reserved for future budget years in the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, and therefore be it resolved that $87,127,116 for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and for the purposes shown below are hereby appropriated. We'll start with the general fund. The personnel services is 6, I'm sorry, $6,795,209. Materials and services is $3,504,545. Capital outlay is $195,000. Debt service is $58,496. Interfund transfers is $589,250. Operating contingencies is $58,200 for a total general fund of $11,207,000. All other funds, special reserve funds, we have personnel services of $4,816,23. Materials and services of $21,934,928. Capital outlay of $4,499,564. Debt service of $16,710. Interfund transfers of $42,630,44. Operating contingencies of $1,029,147. Other expenditures of $1 million. For total other funds of $75,926,416. And this would be dated this 19th day of June.
Julie? Where it says all other funds, does it say reserve or special revenue?
Special revenue.
You read it as reserve. It's supposed to say revenue.
Okay.
It does say revenue, special revenue. So, are we looking for a motion?
Yes.
So, moved to adopt the budget.
I moved, okay, you already did second.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. So, that was the appropriations. We'll go 6C now, resolution to categorize and impose the property tax.
Okay. Whereas Curry County needs to impose property taxes in order to balance the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget, and whereas Budget Committee approval approved the .5996 per 1,000 tax rate in the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget, now therefore be it resolved that the Curry County Board of Commissioners hereby imposes the taxes provided for in the adopted budget at the rate of .5996 per thousand of assessed value with the county for operations, and be it resolved that the Curry County Board of Commissioners hereby categorizes for the tax year 2019-2020 upon the assessed value of all taxable property within the county as follows. General government property taxes, .5996 per thousand, and then if approved, dated this 19th day of June 2019.
Drive a motion.
No move, Mr. Chair. We're under 60 cents. Still.
Second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. Then we have 6D, the 2,000... 2018-19 Audit Auditor's Engagement Letter. Ms. Melzer?
Ms. Colstrom actually has this one.
Okay.
So this is the auditor engagement letter for doing our 2018-19 audit. The total amount is $50,500. Found on page seven. It's an increase of about 6% over last year's. It's the third year of our audit services with them.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the auditor engagement letter as written.
Second?
Second.
I think this one also...
Public hearing?
Needs a signature.
Oh, signature authority.
And giving signature authority to...
It doesn't matter to me. You could have board chair.
I'll say the board chair.
Can we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Another unanimous motion.
JJ, look at the clock.
10:29.
We were gonna do other, but Matt left, so...
Wasn't there an executive session also on the books?
No.
No.
No?
I think we just listed as possible.
Oh, okay.
Just a possible.
So what is the rush? We... There was no rush. You have a record or something?